Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda now is the time. Seeing no movement from the audience, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and ask for agenda changes or the approval of the agenda also.
Mr. Mayor, just we'll have two executive sessions for attorney-client privilege this evening, just to note that, but other than that, no changes to present?
Mr. Mayor, with that, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, consent agenda is approved. First item under unfinished business is distressed property at 126 East Third.
Just an update for all of you, the asbestos remediation was performed the week before last on Friday, the 28th, I believe, of June. And then we mailed off the KDHE form last week. And tentatively, the contractor, if their schedule remains free, believes they will be here the week of July 15th. So that is where we're at with that. We did send you correspondence from the property owner via email.
Counsel, any questions regarding that property?
No, sir.
Let's move on to the distressed property at 308 Chestnut.
Heard that communication from the property owner that we sent. It's our understanding that there's not a formal contract for the work that was discussed two weeks ago on the building in place as of yet. They indicated that that would be that they hope to have that finalized and a contract in place for those repairs in the next two weeks. You guys had set today as the date that you wanted him to have a plan or a contractor in place, so how we proceed is up to you.
Well, when his contractor, Mr. Pugh, was here, we had indicated that we wanted to hear if he had his funds or not, and so we know that he hasn't received them at this point. And we also told him that if things weren't in order by this meeting, that we were gonna go ahead and file to raise that building. Now, that's my opinion. I still feel the same. I'd like to hear from other council members.
I feel exactly the same.
That's the understanding I had.
That's what I feel.
And I can't believe that Mr. Rakas hasn't, in some form, hasn't reviewed our last council meeting where those comments were made and or possibly read a newspaper where those comments were made. So I believe the last two weeks, he's had enough notice to not be surprised if we move forward with this.
Yeah, I think this body would be generous had he met our previous requests with plans and things like that. He has neglected to basically never meet a single request. So I'm with the body on this when I say we proceed with the administrative warrants and pursue raising those properties. Any other comments on that property, counsel?
We need a motion to direct you on that, Ethan?
Yeah, a motion to direct staff. It's fine.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to direct staff to file the appropriate warrants and
Seek a proposal?
Seek the proposal for the raising of that structure.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to seek the administrative warrants and a proposal for demolition of 308 Chestnut. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Then we move on to the distressed property at 217 Main.
I believe that will be discussed via
In the exec.
In our exec, as far as where we're at with that, but no pertinent information, I think, to present publicly at this point.
Do we need to set a motion to continue that, or?
Yeah, just to the next meeting is probably fine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue the distressed property hearing of 217 Main till our next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to continue the distressed property hearing from 217 Main to the next regular council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign, that property is continued. Now, let's start on new business. First item under new business is a 2025 Harvey County EDC funding request. Looks like Beth Shelton's here and she brought reinforcements with her, so.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Beth Shelton. I don't think I've met all of you, but nice to meet you. I brought Rod Cry. He's our board president. So yeah, our funding request we've given to you, it's the same request that we've had since 2013. There were a few years where it was increased, but when I became the director, we wanted to operate at a balanced budget, so we cut back to the same request as 2013. So it's been harder and harder each year to do that, but we're still able to make that same ask for 2025. There were some areas in the budget where we just kind of rearranged some things. Some of the educational courses that we would attend are now online. Some of the trade shows, things like that, we've cut back on. Sponsorships, we're cut back on that area because we think private industry can sponsor some things instead. So still making that same request, hopefully we can continue that. I'm not sure how much longer with prices, everything going up, but that's our request for 2025 from all of our funding partners. We had a really successful past couple of years with manufacturing development. Full Vision did an expansion, CD Customs, Midwest Transformers, Bunting Magnetics, Scorpius, GAF Roofing, and Hildborough Industries. So things have been going very well with manufacturing. That represents about $450 million in capital investment for Harvey County and about 400 new jobs. Something else that we're looking at, we did have a pretty healthy for a nonprofit, a healthy reserve, and we were trying to find ways that we can use some of those funds to assist our communities. So with Newton, where we've used a large portion of the industrial park for GAF, then we are optioning some land instead of the city of Newton having to purchase that option agreement. So we're looking at doing that with our other communities. I've reached out and how can we find ways to do that here in Halsted? One of the things that we've talked to Ethan about is can the EDC put funds towards the spec building that you guys are working on, since you do have some land available now? And the spec building is something that was part of the Garner Report, which we did several years ago. And one of the recommendations from that was a spec building, and you were the only community that stepped up to build one. So can we put funds towards that? We've talked about it in our exec committee, and we were all supportive of that. And our board meeting that was last week, we didn't have enough for a quorum, but we'll vote on it this month to give some funds to you guys to help with that. So we're trying to find creative ways that we can give some of the reserve funds back for the economic development mission that we're, which we're only for industrial development. We do work with Network Kansas, which helps with community development. So that would be things on your main street. We help with that, but our main mission is for industrial development. In our office, it's just myself, Jennifer Mueller. We do have an intern, but Jennifer does our retention visits. So she goes out and visits with your local companies to make sure they're healthy, happy. If they're growing, how can we help them with that process? And then I focus more on the companies, like once they are in growth mode, how can I help them navigate the process through the state and federal government for programs that might be available to them? But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I really appreciate your guys' support of economic development. I know your parcels have been a little bit challenging because seems like the past couple of years with the manufacturing growth, they're wanting big parcels of land. And so we've reached out to a company that's helping us find ones that want smaller parcels, which is what, you know, you guys have, and you kind of have a different shaped plot with it being a long narrow and not, you know, a square. But I do see that we've been able to submit on more the past 12 months with your guys' site. I stopped submitting with the lease, and I really need to talk to Ethan a little bit more, like how do we want to navigate that? Do we still want to submit and just see what comes around? So that's something that we'll continue to talk about. One other thing I wanted to mention was there's an interlocal agreement, and I'm not sure if you guys have seen it yet, but I shared it with Ethan, okay, and with Brad. We've looked at it. We've had our attorney go through it. We've had the city of Newton's attorney, Brad will go through it. Greg and I, and once everyone's kind of in agreement, then we'll bring it forward for everyone to sign. But in the past, the EDC has kind of worked on an informal basis. We give you the funding request, and you give us the funds to do our mission. And this just kind of puts it in writing what's expected of us for the funds that you're giving the EDC. So hopefully, we'll get that done here in the next month or two, and then we'll have that going forward. It'll be an interlocal agreement with the EDC and all of the funding partners.
Have you been by our spec building?
Yeah, yeah. I did that on the, I was here two weeks ago, and I drove by then, and then I just adhered.
I believe they're probably gonna start on the interior framing for the office and bathrooms and then the electrical, but the outside of that building's done. So before long, we're gonna need you to find us a tenant for that.
Yeah, definitely.
It's my hopes to get that building occupied, apply for another grant, and perhaps build a second one, but we'll see how that goes. Well, thanks for what you do for us, Beth.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with that, I would make a motion to approve grant funding, or I mean Harvey County EDC Development Council for a budget not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contribution to EDC. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Rod.
Take care.
Next item on the agenda is the Old Settlers Funding and Street Closure Requests. I believe we got some street closure paperwork in front of us somewhere. An Old Settlers Committee has representation here. Please step to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want.
Good evening. My name is Claire Clifford, and good evening, mayor and city council members. I am the chairperson for the 2024 Old Settlers Committee. On behalf of the Old Settlers Committee, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city of Halsted and all those who helped last year with Old Settlers. We cannot do it without our city staff, and being on the committee, I know that firsthand that it takes a lot, and they do a lot for us, so we truly appreciate them. Old Settlers would like to come also and thank you for your contribution last year, which helps us each make each year of Old Settlers successful. Additionally, at this time, we would like to ask for another contribution this year of $12,000. This year, the Old Settlers events have struggled with the rising costs like everyone else, and we would like to use this money to cover festival insurance, carnival rides, from Fund Services of Kansas City, fireworks, tent rentals, sound services, lights, generators, and other items of that nature for the, all the events we will have going on. This is just a small highlight of the events that we have, and the schedule will be being updated and is current on the website at this time. But the costs this year for everything have gone up, and there are also several businesses that with the different things they have going on, they're not able to contribute as much to Old Settlers. So that's caused some need for a little bit more money. So and then also, I've included, and I think Alan filled out all the information, but for the street closures. So we would like to ask for those street closures during the festivals. Do I need to read through all the closures?
No.
I have them ready.
Yeah.
Yes.
This form is much nicer. It just really helps out, really helps out.
And we have signs that once this piece has gone forward, then we'll go to the businesses and give them signs also to put up that clarify that the parking is only for that business and not for people to park during Old Settlers. Because that causes sometimes people can't get into the businesses, and that caused some problems last year. So we have signs ready for that, laminated signs for those businesses.
Ethan, have you and Josh reviewed these street closures? And he stepped out of the room, so I can't ask him about it.
As far as the times, I'm not familiar enough with, I mean, do these look right to everyone?
Well, most of the times are almost at the end of the business day.
And we tried to adjust a few things even, to put it even later. Yeah. So I think last year, we had had some that maybe needed to be earlier in the day, and so we made some adjustments.
1:00 AM to 11:00 AM, I assume that's for the Old Settlers Parade. Josh, have you reviewed all these street closings?
No conflicts anywhere? All right.
No, I don't, didn't see anything, nothing to do with the paperwork. It all looks, like I said, normal from what they've been doing, so shouldn't be any issues.
Well, in the past, as our packet indicates, we've given $10,000 annual, every year. Request has gone up. I'd like to hear input from other council members.
I would support the increase.
Well, and I know typically you use the donation from the city to cover the insurance, and I'm sure the insurance has gone up for that event.
With the carnival, that probably increased it.
Yeah, and just everything, the cost for everything. And we tried to add even another new event this year, and so just some of that will cause increases.
Yeah. No, I agree. I'm, you know, we're all aware of, every day you wake up, everything costs more, so, yeah. Well, I would imagine we need two motions, one for the funding and one for the closures. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to make a donation of $12,000 to the Old Settlers Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for our annual donation to go up to 12K for Old Settlers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Well, you got the money. Now let's see if we can close the streets.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve Friday's and Saturday's schedule for street closures and providing traffic cones, picnic tables, or things of that nature as described on their forms here submitted. I would make a motion to approve these.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the street closures and necessary supplemental equipment provided to us in their list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you, counsel, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We look forward to this year's Old Settlers, but I'm not gonna be here because my wife inadvertently scheduled a vacation for us out of town. She said, you know, that's Old Settlers, and I'll probably get yelled at.
Inadvertently?
Yeah. She scheduled it, and then we paid for it, and then we looked at the date and went, oh.
Oops.
Next item on our agenda is gas service line replacement project. Ethan will tell us about that one.
Yeah, we, and I might have to call on Pat, but essentially, we had some mains that took some damage, had some temporary repair when we were doing the Ninth and Walnut gas system repairs, or street repairs, excuse me, in the Ninth and Walnut area. And then we also have a block of service gas lines that are bare steel that all need to be replaced in that section as well. This is quite a big project. Would really tax our public works if we tried to do it. Basically, we, USDI is our current gas contractor, so we reached out to them for a quote, and then also to NPL. You have the two same, same scope of work. Pat can answer any specific questions you might have. USD I's bid for that work was just over $112,000, and NPL's was just over $96,000. So we're making or requesting to go with NPL's proposal for that work to be done. We would take that from the gas reserves, which again is money we transfer every year for these larger capital projects related to utilities. It's gas, it's money funded by the gas rates, specifically only for use in the gas systems, so.
Was it, was it damaged by the construction crew, or?
Okay, the four-inch main and the two-inch main were both hit during construction. The four-inch did wind up with a dent in the pipe. It didn't, like I said, we never had a leak on anything. They, we did a temporary repair and just buried it again because the biggest problem was it's right underneath the concrete. It's just not deep enough with the way the grade was put in. The two-inch, we was able to get a little more clearance in it, so it's under the rock, but it's still very shallow, so.
So that's nothing that, like, insurance wouldn't cover on their end or anything?
I wouldn't think so.
She doesn't have a coating on it either.
Yes, they're both coated wrap pipe, so.
You're going back with PE, right?
We're going back with PE, yes.
Is there a tracer with that?
Yeah. That's, yeah, it's mandatory anymore.
And that PE didn't make you do that?
What?
National Fire Protect, Fire Prevention, you have somebody else, whoever does the.
Well, it's the federal government, Tishma, if.
Have to have a tracer.
Yeah, yeah.
So you can tell how deep it is?
No, you can tell where it is. If you got the right equipment, you can sometimes get a depth, but you don't use that for accuracy.
Evidently, they didn't.
You'd never give it out. Well.
If they hit it.
It's tough.
Correct. When you're doing a locate, you never give depth. It's up to the contractors to find that, usually.
They found it.
They found it. The hard way, but they found.
How many more we have sneaking like that?
Probably quite a few.
Pat, my biggest concern is we won't have to cut any of that new street for this new work, or?
Correct. This, this will be all directional board in, under the dirt, in the road right away, not in the street itself. Except for.
And then we'll abandon that old steel line.
It will just ban it in place.
Being that this existing is very shallow, where are they gonna, how deep are they gonna put the new? Would it be three foot?
That's going to vary a little bit, about where it ties in on each end. And then also, there is a storm line we have to go under, so we're gonna get pretty deep in that Pine Street area for that four-inch. And then we'll come back up and match whatever the grade is over at the alley. It's basically alley to alley between those two streets, so.
When we do these new things, do we document them so that we have record for later?
Yeah, that's all part of the record-keeping of this system. Yeah.
Well, question, being that they're gonna do the work, do they actually develop a site plan with streets and everything, and so much in a PDF, and say, hey, this is where we're installing this, and you have this as a matter of record?
No, this won't be quite that detailed. They'll just be in, and we'll have the records of what we do. And then we can, we can incorporate that into our mapping, so.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve construction agreement with NPL Construction as presented for an amount not to exceed $96,250. And authorization for staff, signatures, or any necessary documents relating to the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the gas service line replacement project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We just experienced the one disadvantage of owning your own gas system. You have to take care of it. We have another item under new business. This one's 2024 street sweeping. I think Ethan's got a plan for us there.
Yeah, and the packet was a proposal from Clean Right, who we've used. Again, as talked about in the memo, there are two sweeps on there because that's what we had started asking for. We only intend to do that first sweep. It is slightly higher than the price we paid last year. But again, this is, was done in response after the conversation last council meeting as far as, you know, just the amount of dirt and debris that was left following storm cleanup, and that being quite a tall order for a single unit, as well as the staff time. So the contractor would be out the week of July 29th, so gets it where the streets would be hit prior to Old Settlers. We did, as we talked about two weeks ago, did actually budget for street sweeping contracting this year because we hadn't anticipated purchasing the street sweeper or didn't know if that purchase was gonna be approved till the end of the year. So we just, to be safe, had budgeted for it anyway, so it is a budgeted expense for this year. We were just kind of hoping, had the weather not thrown different plans, that we would only be using our equipment and not have to expend this, but it's definitely needed. There's a lot of small and fine debris there.
Well, personally, with the amount of debris out there, I would, I would rather tear up a contractor's street sweeper than our new one.
I agree. With that, again, if there's no more discussion or questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the Clean Right for street sweeping, 2024, not to exceed $16,700.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract street sweeping. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign.
And on that same note, there's, there's a lot of piles of almost twigs. I think it's ridiculous that people expect the city to come around and clean that up. I mean, it's just lazy. So I think if you could help everyone out, just clean those little sticks up.
I don't disagree, and, you know, I try to do my part and keep my corner clean, but you, you can't make everybody, so.
Some of it are just not gonna be able to sweep up with a sweeper.
Yeah.
I mean, there's just no way. They're gonna have to, somebody needs to go out there and physically pick it up.
Out of them.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, some people have just little piles, like.
Sure, I agree.
That just, I mean, you could take that to the burn side by yourself. Anybody can.
Trash can. They sold us.
Yeah.
All right, we have one more item under new business, and this is regarding our budget for this year. And it's the notice of exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Ethan, if you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, this is just, again, required, and our next meeting would be after that deadline of July 20th to get notice to the county clerk. So this resolution would set the maximum mill levy that the city would seeked, and we just went ahead and said, set that at 75. Just, we were at 74.896. So the city can adopt a budget that is below 75. You just couldn't adopt one that has a mill levy over 75. We put it slightly over the existing one just to allow us to have that variation kind of per our budget work sessions. We know the intent is to keep that mill levy flat. So that just gives us the ability to hopefully dial in that number as close as possible.
Gives us a little wiggle room to make the math work out, don't it?
And then, yeah, we'll just send that resolution to the county clerk, and that sets out so they can get the R and R notices. The other thing it does is set our hearing for the revenue neutral rate the same evening as our anticipated budget public hearing, which would be September 9th this year. And again, that's planning on both those hearings being the same night. We've done that since the R and R legislation was approved and have not experienced any issues with both those being the same night. You all want to move that, we can. We would just need to change that date in the resolution, so.
I think we just will keep it the same until it causes a problem. We've never had a problem with it in the past.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-06, a resolution regarding the governing bodies intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate with a maximum mill levy of 75 mills and setting a public hearing on September 9th, 2024, as required by state law.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution Number 2024-06. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That resolution is adopted. We have two executive sessions on the agenda tonight, and I would entertain the motion for the first one. Right about now.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I moved that the city council recesses into executive session to discuss potential litigation, consulting with the attorney on matters deemed privileged attorney-client relationship, KSA 754319B2, to include the city manager, the city attorney, and to recess until 7:40.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move to the back room, counsel.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result? Hearing nothing from the council, I'm ready to entertain the motion for a second executive session.
Mr. Mayor, council requests we recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations, consultation with the attorney, city attorney on a matter that would deem privileged to attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75-4319B2, to include the city manager and the city attorney, and to come back in session at 7:55.
Second. Have a motion and a second to re-enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move back to the back room, council. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result, though? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll move on to the report section. The agenda, the first thing is governing body comments. Tonight, I'll start with you, Jim.
I'd like to reiterate what Josh was talking about a little bit there about the city is, and many volunteers have put a lot of effort into cleaning the town up a little bit. And some of the smaller stuff and things like that, if people can help get that to the landfill themselves, that really helps out. Especially if we're gonna spend the money and get the streets swept and looking good for old settlers. I mean, that's part of it. And I just like to encourage everyone to get it done and let's move on.
Yep.
That's it.
Charlie?
Sure glad the Fourth of July is over. I asked several people about what were their thoughts, and the majority of, they like it the way it is. The dates and the timing, they're pretty satisfied with that. If anything, they would like to shorten it up for the second and third to 10:30 at night, and then midnight on the night of the Fourth. But aside from that, that's about it. Had somebody ask about it, got some awful big limbs and trees, if there's any chance to having a chipper rented. So people could, if they wanted to take, not that they would do it themselves, but I'll ask, I don't know. Like to commend Grant Williams and the Parks, Recreation and Tree Board for their presentation last week, and that was good. Inquiries about Tree City USA, and if we are a participant in that, and whether or not people could, who they need to contact to potentially get some trees from the Kansas Forest Service to replace the ones that they lost. And if there's some kind of a pool of money that could be used, or how the Kansas State Extension Office does that, I don't know.
We are a Tree City USA, and we have been for how many years in a row, Ethan?
Forty-six, I believe.
One less than what it's been the term of the Tree City Plan.
I think these people are just, you know, they're looking to, who do they turn to for help?
Grant Williams. Grant is the chair of the tree board and can help you with trees. Not sure how many trees we get every year? Do you know that number, Ethan?
No, I mean, Tree City USA is basically, we have to spend a per capita amount per resident on tree-related activities.
Two percent or something like that.
So I know, I know the board has had discussions of probably purchasing or doing, like they've done a coupon program, I think, the last two years. For like 50% off, or reimbursing people for that. I don't, and they're currently having discussions, I think, with some of the local tree farms.
Who are aware of the situation. Obviously, we lost a lot more this go-round than we ever have before, except for the ice storms.
Yep.
Well, I think in years past, Grant has always had to work a little extra hard to get enough trees to meet the criteria for the year. I don't think that's gonna be a problem now for this year, or probably even next year, so. But yeah, get ahold of Grant Williams, those people that are, that are looking for trees, or ways to replace them through the Tree City USA program.
And the new Halsted app seems to be working very well. If you don't know, I think that went online this afternoon or something like that, Friday. Yep, works great.
What's the app called?
It's City of Halsted.
City of Halsted.
It has our logo. If you go, either Android or Apple, go to your Play Store, and you can download the app, and it has our logo on it, and yeah.
I really wish you would've said all that in your microphone.
I don't have it, I gave it to Pat, because Pat always.
Julie gave her microphone away to Pat for tonight. Okay.
He's got it turned off.
Go, go to your, your Apple Store, your, your Google Store, and search for the City of Halsted, and you should find an app. And that will give you access to virtually all of our website stuff, correct? So I will check that out myself tonight. Let's move to you, George.
Regarding the trees, I had a gentleman who owns a tree farm out in Heston, and he reached out and made an offer to sell 10 mature trees at a very discounted rate. I put Grant in touch with this individual. So he, Grant and the tree board are going to pursue this. But also, this same individual said he would be willing to talk to other citizens in the community if they would like to come and purchase trees from him also. I will make that information available to Julie. I will just confirm terms and conditions one more time with him, and then I'll let Julie have this information, and citizens can then reach out and pursue. So this gives them another avenue to, to look, look for trees. And he's right there in Heston.
If I may, I would prefer probably Grant. I mean, I don't mind having that information helped push out too, but if Grant is working on it from the city side and.
Make him the contact.
Yeah, I would think that it would be better for him to be the contact, so he knows who's getting, you know, trees already at discounted price and not, you know, getting, giving everybody a good chance to.
I'll, I'll make sure I'll have all this information in line.
Yes.
And then I'll dispense it to whoever needs it.
But we'll push it out, absolutely.
One more thing, I had a citizen call and ask, why don't we have our lights on the city bridge? Big problem for the city, Pat. Why don't we have the lights on the bridge?
I think that's a grant.
That's grants.
That's grants? Okay.
Grant, if you're watching tonight, you're getting hammered on pretty good.
I imagine they'll be up by old settlers, but we ended up because unfortunately of continuous vandalism.
Sure.
Having to take them down.
Yeah. Anyway, I was called, and I told them I would ask, and that's all I have.
How about you, Josh?
Nope, I think I'm good. Covered everything.
All right. Firstly, I'm just hopeful everybody had a happy and safe Fourth of July, and it's over, so we're all back to work now, so. We'll move to our city manager for his manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Robinson alluded to, the big news is the new city website went live on the fifth. We are aware that some things did not transfer over as we anticipated, and it's gonna happen at any conversion. But the app and the website, if you go to halstedks.com, it should always take you to the new, new website, so we will work on fixing those things. Notably, for instance, the, the packets didn't quite work out the way we anticipated. So we will get that all updated and hopefully fixed and functioning like people are used to in a similar section. And then the, there was a little bit of a time lapse with some recent updates on our old website that didn't make it to the new, so we're going and recreating a few weeks' worth of posts and information that had gone out on the old website that unfortunately didn't make it to the new website. But we're working with the new vendor and the old vendor, and we'll get it taken care of. Just bear with us, or send Julie or myself information if you think something's missing or not working as anticipated on that new website. And yeah, hope people utilize the app. As the mayor said, pretty much anything on the website can be found via the app as well. So pretty excited for that functionality increase compared to our old site. We will be meeting with the wayfinding sign vendor this week to look at the tentative sites for those five signs, and hopefully continuing that project to roll forward. We're continuing to work with KDOT on the easements that will be needed for the safer routes to school. And we just had a conversation with Lochner this morning. Work on the North Street project still continues in earnest now that surveying and whatnot's done, so hopefully we'll start laying out, seeing some plans and, and working more in the weeds on the North Street project. I have not heard yet from the contractor on the spec building, as far as their anticipated end date or when. Just hopefully get in a window so we can work with EDC to begin marketing that building as it gets closer and closer. And I know the last thing, I think, will be the drives and approaches going in. And then we are also working in, are still on the budget, and next meeting, we'll probably have you guys set some budget work sessions to begin going over that as we've worked through everything. And old settlers prep is, is well underway with the city departments kind of gearing up for that, so. That is where we are at, unless anyone has any specific questions. One other thing I will point out is the league annual conference is in Wichita again this year. They've opened up so we can enroll. We'll send out information to you all, but hopefully some of you can make one or, or both of those days. It's a, it's a good event for elected officials and networking, so it's reasonably close this year as well. Some years it's in Topeka or in Kansas City, so with it being in Wichita, hopefully those of you that can can, can make it down for at least part of the conference. So we'll push that out to you. And that's all I got.
All right, anybody have any questions of our city manager? Well, I did download the app, and the first thing I noticed is the event page, which serves as a good reminder for our city council meetings, our municipal court dates, when trash pickup is, utility bills due. It looks like a pretty nice, pretty nice app. We didn't put your birthday in there, George. But yeah, I encourage everybody that is familiar with mobile apps to go download that. The first thing it's gonna ask you is if you want to allow notifications, and I'm not sure what all notifications will push out through that, but probably anything that we would consider valuable information will come out in that manner. It'd be good for everybody in town to have that, so. With that, we've finished our agenda this evening, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.